Okay, we're live.
Welcome to the Tuesday, February 16th Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be livestreamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org, per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Okay, first up, Robin Lightcap, you want to give us an update on the preschool promise?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to everyone for allowing me a few minutes to share an update on progress with preschool promise. I do have a slide deck I'm going to take you through, and I'm going to start with some data from the 2019-20 school year. So going back a little bit just to share some of the outcomes that we saw in that year's data analysis. And then I will shift into talking about how we have navigated the COVID crisis to support families and our childcare preschool providers with your support and just show you some of the things that we've been able to make happen. So I am going to share my screen now. And let's see if I can get it. Okay, so Commissioner Rice, I see you on my screen still. Does that, is that working well? Can you see the first slide? Okay, thank you. So to start with, just to remind everyone, our vision for preschool promises that all Montgomery County children are ready for kindergarten. And our mission is how we do that is by equipping our preschools and our families with exceptional support, coaching, and education. And we have a commitment to equity that has been there from the beginning that will address the racial and social inequities in all that we do. And you can see this as evidence in our three strategic priorities in the strategic plan we put together a couple of years ago that we are looking at how we engage families and how we improve quality in early childhood and also how we build racial equity. So as I shared, we're going to look at the 2019-20 school year outcomes, and we're always a bit delayed to get all the data from the state and do our analysis. And so when we go back and look at that 2019-20 school year, I want to start by just helping you understand who we're serving. We were serving almost 2,000 four-year-olds in our different, about 85 different partner sites. And you can see here that 52% of our children attending were black children. And we had another 7% multiracial, 3% Hispanic, and then about a third who are white. And when we break it down by income, you can see here that 75% of our families have a household income below $42,000 a year. I think this is important because some of you who were around at the beginning when we were debating the best model for preschool promise, we wanted to make sure that the county's resources went to address the inequities that we talked about in that we really were prioritizing families who have not had the same opportunities. And so I think this shows that we indeed are supporting those families while at the same time making the program available to all incomes. So I think this is important to see how we're doing in reaching families. And this slide just shows who we're working with. Because as you all know, preschool promise is not a preschool program. We are working with existing preschool programs across Montgomery County. And you can see here that we partner with public schools. That's in the orangey color there on the right in the graph, about 43%. And then we have 33% that are childcare providers, and 22% are Head Start Partner, which could also be considered a childcare provider. And then about 3% are Catholic and private schools. And we do include family childcare providers in that blue childcare provider number. So I think this is just nice look at how comprehensive we are in working with all the different types of preschool programs a family might choose. This is where we get into the outcome data, and this is a really important slide. This is the kindergarten readiness assessment. And here we're looking at the students who go to Dayton Public Schools for kindergarten. And what we do, obviously, children are in preschool the year before they go to kindergarten. And so then when they go into kindergarten, we get the state assessment data and take a look at our students who attended preschool promise sites compared to those who did not attend preschool promise sites. You can see in the first column here, the first column shows preschool promise students enrolled for five months or greater. And the column on the right is students who did not attend a preschool promise site. And what you can see is a 16 percentage point differential for the children who did attend a preschool promise site, which is quite significant. And the breakdown between the blue and the orange is different levels on the kindergarten readiness assessment. The state has three different bands. We're showing the top two bands, which is our targeted area. The blue being approaching readiness and the orange being demonstrating readiness. And you can see that there's an even larger percentage of folks in the orange who attended a preschool promise site, meaning that they're coming in at that top level, fully ready for kindergarten. So this is really encouraging progress as we look at how we're partnering with our preschool promise sites and families to help kids get ready for kindergarten. This next slide shows, as we have talked about, we're committed to addressing the opportunity gaps. And so we break our data down by race and by gender. And we do that because we want to ask ourselves, how are we doing in prioritizing our black students? How are we doing in adjusting our strategies and our investments? And here you can see that this is the same graph that we just looked at in the previous slide, but the first two columns are for our black students. The second two columns are for our white students. And what you can see here is that we do see the same differential for students attending preschool promise sites, whether they were black or they were white. And so this is important because we want to make sure we're not only helping one population, but that we're really addressing inequities and lifting everyone up. In the Kettering data, I did not include every single data set because it becomes too many charts to digest in our short time. But in our Kettering data, we also see this differential and in fact see an even greater differential for our black students. And of course, recognizing that there are fewer black students in Kettering, too. So we have to keep that in mind as we look at our data charts as well. But again, this underscores the positive impact that attending a preschool promise site has for all of our students across Montgomery County. So now I'm going to shift into, obviously, COVID has impacted every sector. And thanks to the county's support, we have been able to come alongside families and providers to navigate and sustain operations during some really challenging times. If you think back to the beginning of the pandemic, childcare was actually one of the very last business sectors for Governor Dewine to close. And it's because we all know how critical childcare is to sustaining businesses because working parents need to have some place to send their children. If they cannot work at home, they've got to have childcare up and running. So the governor allowed providers to, after the, during the initial stay-at-home orders, the governor allowed providers to elect to open as a pandemic childcare provider. And because of Montgomery County and the Human Services Levy Support, oops, let's see. I'm missing the slide that I thought was going to be there. I'll just keep talking. The, because of the Montgomery County Human Services Levy Support that you all provided, we were able to give $120,000 in tuition assistance to help 100 children who attended 18 different pandemic childcare during those first initial two months when the pandemic first hit. So this is really significant, and I just want to thank you for that investment. I know our families were very grateful. It was extremely challenging times for everyone. And to know that they were able to send their children to a safe and high-quality place made a big difference. All right, now, as we look at our enrollment shifting into this year, this is a, this just gives you a feel for the number of four-year-olds who have been attending preschool promise sites over the last few years. And then in blue, you can see the 1,800 number for this current year. So you can see that we are down compared to last year, which would be expected given the pandemic and the fact that many preschools on the public school side have not been open. And so this is understandable, but at the same time, we're not significantly down. So I think it shows the way that we've been able to adapt and serve families and help them keep learning, whether they're at home or they are sending their children in person. And if you break down that 1,800, we have about 1,500 that are attending in person and 300 who are participating in what we're calling our preschool promise plus, which was a new program we stood up in response to COVID that allows families to help their children learn at home. We knew attendance would be negatively impacted. Even if your child was going to an in-person preschool program with quarantining realities, we knew people would be in and out of that in-person preschool. So we developed this preschool promise plus program, which is allowing our children to get a tablet and to get a playbox every month as well as other learning materials to do at home. And before I go more into that, this just gives you a feel for where our 1,800 children are across the county. This actually is the 1,500 who are connected to a physical site. And thanks to the county's support with the sales tax levy funding, we were able to add Northridge this school year. So you can see our map is constantly growing, and we have Northridge there at the top. We, you can see the percentages are the percentage of four-year-olds that we think we're reaching compared to census data. So that gives you a feel for how we're doing, and our percentages are a little lower this year. Again, to be expected with COVID. And this is a picture of one of the tablets that we were able to give to our families. This, thanks to the Montgomery County Cares Act funding, we purchased tablets and also purchased a one-year subscription to ABC Mouse, which is a learning software. We have about 1,300 tablets that are out, and we're able to analyze data. Right now, we have about 400 young learners who actively use the ABC Mouse every week, about 80 minutes a week, which is perfect. That's the amount of time research shows is good. You don't want children on their devices too long, but you also want them to be learning. And so we are working on trying to get the other families on to use ABC Mouse as well, since we do have a gap there between the numbers who are actively using it. But it has been a positive process and a positive step forward in helping children learn at home. This is also a picture of our teachers. We have been able, a big part of our work is investing in improving quality. And here you can see that over 300 teachers this school year are continuing to do intensive professional development via Zoom. This is just a screenshot of one of our many trainings. And our teachers have also agreed to use Swivel robots, which are actually robots that sit in the classroom with an iPad and film the classroom so that we can do coaching in a safe way remotely. And we think this will be really beneficial going forward because we all learn from watching ourselves on video, and we think it's going to really help in improving the quality of instruction in our classrooms. And I want to end by talking about the star rating. Those of you who've been around for a while know that Montgomery County has invested significantly in supporting early childhood for over a decade now. And back in the beginning days, back when we had the Ready Set Sore Initiative, the county was really a leader in helping providers get a star rating. There was a new star rating system. So if you go back to 2008, you can see we had five star rated programs. And if you look fast forward to today, we are now at 276. And you know that we started preschool promise back in 2017, so we had a dramatic increase there from 2017 to 2020. Again, thanks to the county's support, going back to the Human Services Levy, and then now the investment from the sales tax to help make preschool promise expand. And another key part of this is that the state set a rule that by 2020, if you were going to serve publicly funded childcare, you had to be star rated to keep that county or to keep the state contract. And I'm happy to share that because, again, of the county's support. Oops, let's see if I can skip the screen there. I'll just keep talking about it. So the, we were able to get 97% of our providers that have a contract with publicly funded childcare rated. So we did not miss out on serving children. The other ones that were not there were in a waiting period. So we didn't lose services for any children because of the state mandate for the star rating. And I know the county commissioners were actively part of helping to champion keeping that mandate to help increase quality. And just wanted to share that we really did a great job as a county to meet that milestone. And then if I zoom in just on preschool promise providers, I also want to share that we've seen a significant increase in the star ratings just for preschool promise providers. You can see that back in 2016, the graph at the, or the line at the bottom, 44% of our providers were highly rated, which means three-star or higher. And now in 2020, 83% are three-star or higher. So again, underscoring the commitment to improving quality that our providers have. And then here, we show that more than three-fourths of our children. So if we think about it, not just in terms of the actual sites, but where our children are attending, because that's what we ultimately care about is where our children are. And you can see that over three-fourths of our children are attending a three-to-five-star rated site. And we're really pleased about that as well. We are continuing to partner with 4C for Children and with others in our community to help the rest of the providers get to that three-to-five-star mark as well. Because by 2025, the state is requiring that you have to get to that three-star level. And then I just want to end by saying thank you for your continued support because we will be able to expand now to West Carrollton in this coming school year. So this map just shows all seven of the communities where we operate. And as a reminder, the program is open to all residents across Montgomery County who choose to send their four-year-olds to a preschool program that is partnering with us in one of these seven geographic areas. And I believe that's all I have on my slides, and I would welcome any questions that you all might have.
Yeah, Rob, and I just have a quick question. How long does it take a provider to get up to the five stars? If they call you and say, I want to start this, how long does it take them?
Well, to get to, it depends what elements they already have in place. But I would tell you, it's much easier, obviously, to get a one-star than to go up to the three-to-five-star level. When you get to the three-to-five-star level, it has to do with how you're implementing curriculum. That's what the marker is at three-star. And at five-star, it really is about how many teachers you have with a degree or credential that's higher in early childhood. And because the system has been so historically underfunded, that is very challenging because of the wages that many of our childcare teachers earn. So to attract and retain staff that have a four-year degree or a master's degree can be challenging with the challenges and funding. But so that's the biggest roadblock. And so it depends if they already have people on their staff who have a degree or if they have to recruit people or if they have to help their current, their staff get a higher degree. So that can, that varies depending on how long it will take for somebody to get a credential or a degree.
Robin, I just want to commend you and your team and 4C because when the state first announced that, I know we were like, how, how could we do this? We weren't at a point where we really, because we could see how many were getting star rated. And, and I remember a conversation with you because there were a lot of counties throughout the state that were like, we need to ask them to hold off. And you said, nope, we got to go. And they did, right? And not that the state would have changed it, but we're well on our way. And that number is, that's so impressive, and thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It really is because of the county's investment. We are in such good shape. So Montgomery County stands out as being further along for sure.
Well, what's so nice is every year to see that we have results. I think that's, now that our students are learning and we're tweaking it along the way. And I love what you've done with, with the COVID, you know, the, what's, what's the program called at home?
Plus, preschool promise plus is what we call it.
I love that. And I, I'm looking forward to seeing what's going to happen with the mobile preschool. And so thanks, and just keep us updated.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Carolyn, you're?
I couldn't agree more. And if anything, this pandemic has certainly reinforced that our, our professionals in this space are absolutely essential to our essentials. And we really, you know, I know there's federal legislation pending to give more support and to really address the gaps in that field. So we'll be, we'll be there. Thank you, thank you, thank you to each and every individual, you know, professional in this field. I know it has been a tough year, and it's been tough on families and tough on kids. The one question I kind of have with the devices that we gave out and the ABC Mouse, the preschool promise plus, it looks like 400 of the 1,200 are using them. Do you have any ideas why the other, the majority are not using it as much as you'd like to see them using it? Is there, you know, what, what's behind that? Are parents just frazzled or they don't know how to use the technology? Or do they not have the access within their homes? Because I know we're dealing with digital, you know, inequities across the county. And we're trying to address that as well. So if you have any thoughts, that, that's one thing.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, and it's one that is bothering us, too. So we have been doing individual outreach to families, and sometimes we find it's just technical. I mean, I think we all have experienced challenges logging into something, not liking the passcode, not liking the username, losing the username or passcode. I think some of it is, is as basic as that. So we've been helping a lot of people reset their codes and also been helping them understand how to use it. So I think there's just more individualized assistance we need to give. We have a team that's actually calling through the families that, who have not yet opened or redeemed their code to make sure they understand how to use it. So I expect to see that number increase. I don't know that we'll get to 100%, of course, but I do think it will increase.
Well, I think that's important insights for all of us. You know, we're learning a lot about remote learning, the challenges of it, not just in young ages, but across the spectrum. So once again, I'm not surprised that you're on top of it and going to figure it out. But that was the one thing I hate that we, those little ones aren't getting to take full advantage of these resources.
But. One thing that we are doing, Commissioner, is we, we have the ABC Mouse software, but there are also other things like PBS Kids and other learning software. And so we're looking at our families using those instead because it could be they're electing to use something else. So we are looking at our data to analyze that. I just don't have that, yeah.
Once again, overarching, bravo, bravo to everyone involved. But I just did have that question.
Well, thank you so much, Robin. This was very informative and very impressive. And give a shout out to your staff. They're doing a great job. And this is just, I just feel so good about the little kids and that they're going to be ready to go to kindergarten and just be so much more prepared. And, and that's the important thing. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Okay, county engineer?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, viewers online. We survived last night, so that's a very good thing. I, I decided not to wear my snow tie today because that didn't bring us much luck the last couple of weeks. Oh, we have two, two resolutions today. The first is Resolution 21-165 to authorize an agreement with Security Fence Group, Inc. for the Alex Bell Road and Munger Road Traffic Signal Installation Project in Miami Township at their lowest and best bid of $211,210.71 through December 31st of 2022. And 166 is to advertise for the 2021 Crack Seal Program countywide at an estimated cost of $144,000.
I move for approval.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Paul, and thank your team on behalf of all of us. Thanks.
I thank them already, but I'll thank them again for you.
Do, because I saw firsthand, so trust me, I know. They've done a great job on the township roads that I was on. So thank you and thank them, so.
Okay.
Okay. Public defender?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the public defender, we have Resolution 167, authorizing a payment by warrant to JCA Forensics LLC.
I made to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the clerk's office, we have Resolution 168. Approve the minutes of the meetings on February 9th, 2021. Approval of bills, and that list is available in the clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have just a few items this morning or this afternoon. The first is 169. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 170 authorizes a change order for the agreement with APG Office Furnishings for Furniture and Installation Services for the Business Services Department by increasing the original amount of $14,679.48 for a revised total of $268,397.22. And this is for our West Town Opportunity Center. And Resolution 171 is to request proposals for stop-loss insurance for the Human Resources Department.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Environmental Services, Matt?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Got three resolutions today. First one is 172, release 100% of the letter of credit and subdividers contract with VWC Holdings Limited for the villages of Windy Creek Springs, Section 4. And the final two are to amend agreements. The first is 173 with Kilchner Incorporated for construction of their ocean control phase two Wolf Creek Relief Sewer Replacement Project by extending the date through September 30th, 2021. And the last one is 174 with Verizon Connect Fleet USA LLC, NKA Verizon Connect, by adding vehicle tracking subscription for 200 vehicles and migrating subscriptions to a source well cooperative contract in amount not to exceed $57,043.20 through December 31st, 2022.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John Parks, OMB?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have four resolutions for your consideration this afternoon. 175 to authorize appropriation amendments. 176 authorized additional appropriations. 177 authorized cash transfers. And 178 authorized appropriation decreases.
I move for approval.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Business Services, Chris?
Good afternoon. Under workforce development, we have 0179, authorizing an option to extend agreement with the workforce now essential timekeeping solution module for business services, youth works program in amount not to exceed $23,172 through December 31st, 2021. Our community economic development, we have 0180, publish a notice of public hearing on housing and community development needs for Montgomery County this school year 2021 through 2025, consolidated plan to discuss performance of previously funded CDBG home and ESG projects to review a proposed amendment to the FY19 action plan and to take public comments. And under 0181, we have authorizing public notice availability of fiscal year 2019 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, public hearing on February 25th, 2021, and submission of the caper to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development after the required comment period.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay. Comments by county administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. First, I'd also like to compliment Paul and your team. But I'd also like to talk about our broader emergency management team that Paul is a part of. Anytime we're going to have snow emergencies or any type of emergencies, Commissioners, you head up our Regional Emergency Management Agency. And we meet well before these type of storms are going to hit with weather services, with first responders, with jurisdictions. We meet with Paul's team. So I just want to say hats off to Paul, but also over the weekend, our entire emergency management team, they were convening and meeting and having conversations with the National Weather Service and different jurisdictions, including our first responders, to make sure that our area is prepared for any type of storm or storm damage. I also like to talk, Commissioners, a little bit about. I also like to talk, Commissioners, a little bit about the United Negro College Fund. This is the nation's largest and most effective minority education organization. Each year, more than 100 million in scholarships is awarded to students attending more than 1,100 schools nationwide. And Commissioners, as you know, we have our own scholarship fund set up for the month of February. The campaign is going on. And now's the time that we have designated for our employees to make donations. So Commissioners, would you like to talk a little bit about our own campaign?
Sure, I will. So we are very proud at the county that we are able to sponsor, we being the county employees are able to sponsor several of our UNCF scholarships. And our county employees donate the money towards the Montgomery County UNCF Scholarship, which awards eligible students up to $2,000 for their college degree. And what's special about our scholarship fund is, first, it is funded by our employees. And second, it's specifically for students from our county. And the goal of that was to make college degrees more affordable and attainable for our students. It's open to local high school graduates, those that can demonstrate unmet financial needs verified by a college or university. And it's, it's important to note that there are two applications to fill out. There's every year, and everybody that's had a child in college or going, is the standard FAFSA, which is the free application for federal student aid. And then there's also our own Montgomery County UNCF form. And so to get the Montgomery County form, you go to www.mcohi.org backslash UNCF. So it's on the county website and you can link to it. And you'll also find eligibility criteria there. And so please, please check our website again, www.mcohi.org/uncf. And we really are happy that students are taking advantage of that. So as Michael said, the month of February is when it's open for all of our employees to hopefully give what they can. So I'm glad we do this. Thank you.
Yeah, and our employees always step up and they know the importance of this. So we have just a couple of weeks left. So on another note, Commissioner Rice and I had a great time Friday going out to Children's Services because it was the annual teddy bear roundup. The National Council of Negro Women, they, they do this every year. And I believe it's, this was their 17th or 18th year. And this year, they donated over 300 teddy bears. And it's basically to help children as they go into the foster care system. And it's just, it, it just, it's a wonderful, wonderful event to go to. I know Commissioner Rice and I went this time and Commissioner Lieberman and I, we have gone, done, and done this since when, Debbie, we were first elected, I think in 2006.
Almost the whole time they've been doing it. So.
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. So I, I see in the pictures, because I wondered how it would be with COVID. So they have separated in plastic bags.
Yep, yep, they kept them, but that's 300 bears in there. They had a few there that, that we held. And unfortunately, the little kids weren't there this time. They had to keep us all socially distant. But we're just a wonderful, wonderful event. And this group of ladies are just so compassionate about this and they do this year after year after year. And it, it's just wonderful. Just think a little child that comes into a strange place with a strange family and they can grab onto this wonderful cuddly little soft little teddy bear. So it's always a pleasure to go to that.
I, I totally agree. And the interesting is that the National Council of Negro Women, our Dayton section, they've actually, they don't just donate to Children's Services. They donated thousands of bears to Children's Services as well as other agencies. So they're certainly helping our kids, but they're really helping children across our region. And that's just wonderful. And this organization has been around for 86 years, which I think is incredible. And they really seek opportunities for women of African descent. And so I just chime in that we thank them so much for their caring and their partnership. And they really take it to heart to really improve, you know, our diverse Montgomery County community. So thank you, thank you, thank you to each and everyone. It, it's just, what was the only ingredient missing was seeing the kids and the delight in their eyes that I know I've seen in the past. So that was wonderful. I'm also going to add today that the Montgomery County Environmental Learning Center is virtually hosting its annual recycled art contest this year. So recyclable materials, as you know, are an important resource and we want to show them off. The contest is open to all Montgomery County students in grades kindergarten through senior year, K through 12. And it's a great way to teach our youngest community members about reducing, reusing, and recycling. Entries for this contest are due virtually by April 14th. So you have basically two months. And you, anyone interested, any student interested can visit www.mcswd.org for complete contest details. You know, earlier and I think right after the first of the year, I went to that Styrofoam collection event that the Eagle Scouts were joining with our organization, the Parks and Centerville and whatnot. And it was amazing. So our younger generation really gets this. So this is their chance to, through art, really send a message. And so we encourage as many students as possible to take part.
Okay, well, before we adjourn, here we go again. Don't forget to wear your mask, says socially distant and wash your hands. And also I have to say, because of this bad weather we've had the past couple of days, please check on your neighbors. I noticed some of the side streets I was going on, you know, you can tell that the sidewalks aren't clean, the driveways aren't cleaned. And so please check on your neighbors if you think that they might need some assistance. So with that, our next Montgomery County Commission meeting is next Tuesday, February 23rd, 1:30.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Have a great week.
Thanks.